So firstly, I'd just like to remind everyone that these proceedings are being recorded, and the recording of which will be placed on this council website for public viewing. You now have the agenda before you for meeting of scrutiny committee being held this afternoon at 2pm. I will now also take a roll call for the minute and would ask if members would confirm they were present when I called their names. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
And I received apologies from Bailey Scott. Deputy Lord Provost Curdell.
Present.
And I received apologies from Bailey Robertson, councillor Hunter is kindly attending as her substitute councillor Hunter present.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Thank you. And I perceive apologies also from councillor Ilnackla and councillor Anderson's also kindly attending as her substitute councillor Anderson present.
Afternoon, I'm here.
Thank you very much. And councillor Short, is councillor Short present? Bill Marklemis absent at this moment in time. It then takes you on to declaration of interest, there's well not any members of any declarations to the content of the agenda as it stands. Okay, there being no declarations, it then takes you on to the agenda note item two. Appointment of Scottish Fire and Rescue Service local commander for T side and appointment of Police Scotland divisional commander for T side, this item was for noting.
Yes, suppose we just welcome Brian and Nicola along to the meeting and wish you a long time solving problems in Dundee for us. I suppose for the fire again, I'm looking for yous never had a call out, but I realise that crime's not likely to go away. But so I wish you well in your time in Dundee. Okay, Willie.
Yeah, thank you very much. Commune of that item being noted, item three then is the fire and rescue quarterly performance report. It's a report by area commander Todd and Scott Beady is also present, he's a station commander, he's deputised for group commander Paul Robertson.
Okay, do you just want to say a few words on the report lads or are you just looking to move forward with questions?
Thanks, Chair. Just, I would just like to take the opportunity to introduce myself. Thanks for your welcome. I'm delighted to take, recently take post as the new local senior officer for the Dundee area. And I look forward to working with you all and please do not hesitate to get in touch at any time at all. If you've got any fire related questions or matters that I can assist with. As mentioned, my colleague Scott Beadie is here today to present the performance report. Happy to just give you a quick overview with some of the key items and then move to questions if that's okay, Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that you, Billy Scott?
Afternoon, everybody. I'll just give a quick summary. So we start off on our priority one, as you can see from the report. The number of incidents has decreased with the arrow going green pointing down the way compared to the same quarter. So we're heading in the right direction, although we did have one significant house fire in curtain in June. On our priority two, non domestic buildings, again, our figures are good and this area is the lowest figures for the last four years. On to priority three, road traffic collisions, due to Dundee not having many high speed roads within the city. These RTCs are mainly low speed occurrences for herself, low speed impacts, which in turn results in less extrications for herself, less likely for people to be entrapped within the vehicles in these. On to priority four, unwanted fire alarm calls. We have had a new policy in for the last year for the type of incidents we attend. But we aim to work with what we would call repeat offenders to further reduce these unwanted alarms. And this is by supporting and educating the stakeholders within these buildings, i.e. the management and people that may reside in these buildings. On to priority five, deliberate fires, although the arrow is pointing up the way red and might not be the direction might be looking for, but this is actually the lowest figures for the last three years, so that are actually coming down. And out of the 18 incidents, 66% of these were vehicle fires. So that gives you a brief summary. We are now happy to discuss our preparedness and our performance management, any of the appendices and any of the good work we've been doing.
Okay, thank you for that. I looked at Bailey McPherson, slipped asked a question.
Thanks very much, convener, and thanks very much Brian and Scott and a welcome to Brian indeed. Thanks to Scott for the overview and it's one of the things that you actually touched on, Scott, in relation to unwanted fire alarms. And if we see the information on page 17 of the substantive page numbers, if you like, 15 of your actual report. It's very clear that hospitals and other medical settings and student halls of residence cause the frankly, the vast majority of these. And you indicated about engagement with stakeholders. I was just really wondering if you could give a little bit more information regarding that. Clearly, I assume in relation to hospitals, Nine Wells Hospital is clearly the largest setting by far within the Dundee area. And obviously there are a very great number of staff and I was just really wondering how that about good practice in relation to avoiding unwanted fire alarm signals is really cascaded down to what is a very large, you know, thousands, frankly, thousands of staff within the Nine Wells setting. Specifically in relation to student halls of residence, I was just really wondering what you do at the start of the academic year, which has just recently passed. I'm thinking about things like freshers week and engagement with students and so on. So just really wondering if you could give a little bit more information on the, you know, engagement with stakeholders that you referred to.
Thanks for your question, Minister McPherson. Scott will maybe be able to come in a wee bit more detail and give you a quick overview of that. We continue to work with Nine Wells Hospital in terms of the management and giving them support in terms of how we can reduce the amount of unwanted fire alarm signals. You can appreciate it's an environment where they've got very sensitive alarms and they do go off at times where sensitive works are going on. But it's important given that the risk in that hospital that we can respond to those appropriately. Our community action team and our fire, legislative fire, fire action team. We continue to liaise with managers, looking at areas of best practice, looking at sharing information and how we can reduce those calls. And that links into us delivering presentations to some of the staff, the key members of staff so that can be cascaded through. But I guess the key is the communication part and identifying where these are happening. And looking at why these have happened in terms of reduction and how we can, we can drive that reduction down. But we've got a really, really good relationship then with the management team and ourselves as an organisation and we look to build on that to drive those down. In terms of freshers week around that, we do a lot of activity around about that. We target groups where we've seen significant activity previously. We look to engage with groups, we look to engage with the universities around that. And also not just freshers week, after freshers week as well, we'll, we'll do some significant engagement with our universities and those types of establishments to make sure that these people perhaps only living away from home for the first time are as safe as they possibly can be. So in terms of detail, I don't have the level of detail, but I don't know if Scott is able to add to that before we, before we move on.
Certainly for the type of the student accommodation. A high number of incidents is caused by aerosol generated activity where either hairspray or deodorant has been used within the room in a confined setting. So part of our education is educating students, don't spray your deodorant or your hairspray under the detector because it is going to activate it. So it's even simple, basic things like that can help reduce the number of incidents we get called out to. So that is part of the education between operational crews, the legislative fire safety team and the community action team. When they're meeting the students at the freshers or actually visiting the halls, just simple education to them.
Okay, I'm very grateful for both responses. Clearly roll on deodorant is the way forward, it would appear. But fundamentally, I'm grateful for that reply because it gives the reassurance that, you know, the Scottish Fire and Rescue Services being as proactive as it possibly can be in trying to spread the word as to, if you like, good practice, particularly in these large settings like hospitals and student halls of residence. So grateful for the responses. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Obviously Bailey Wright is looking to ask the question as well.
Thank you. Can I first apologize? I'm having IT problems and that's the reason my camera is off today. I'm looking at page eight and it's the performance summary and can I say well done for bringing the majority of the of these things down, but obviously the one, the two that I've been concerned about is the primary and the secondary fires going up. I was, something I've always been concerned about because I've had bins being set on fire in certain areas in my area. And then I look at on page 21, on appendix one, the community safety engagement. And I'm looking at the work experience for students. Does the, the schools, the secondary schools, are they quite good allowing their students to come if that's what they want to do? I'm just thinking about 30 years ago, my son did his Duke of Edinburgh award. And that was tied in with spending, I think it was five days with the police and five days with fire. And so I'm just wondering if the engagement is quite good? Or, or is it something you're probably going to have to work on to try and get more students in to do that?
Thanks very much for your question. Given I've only really been in post for, for three months, but I have had a look at the area and how we operate. And I can relate it to the other areas within our organisation right through Scotland. I think our relationship with the, with the schools is very, very good. I think we've got, we've got a, we've got a youth volunteers scheme now where kids can come in and volunteer and be part of our organisation and live skills as well as providing community safety and support to our communities as well. And we generally have a really good relationship with schools. We don't have problems getting into schools to deliver fire safety messages and that will be really prevalent around about just now as we move into the November time. We will be doing significant engagement around schools in order to, to give the safety message and prevent as much incident happening around November in particular as we can. So an answer to your question, we don't have a problem with schools, really proactive relationships. And they're really, really supportive as are we, if they're doing anything at all. We've got significant engagement of community action team and you'll see that in the transition project is just one example of that. How, how we can incorporate what we do into improving community safety through, through our young, our young people and our, and our communities.
The secondary, the secondary fires, sorry. The primary, the deliberate ones, is that an age group thing or? You did say some of it was, some of the details were cars going on fire themselves. I was just wondering about the rest.
Yeah, I mean, again, we'll work with our partners in Police Scotland for any antisocial behaviour in terms of wheelie bins. We'll look at trends, our community action team, we'll look at trends and perhaps areas of where that's been happening. And we'll, we'll target that. And I've certainly come into the area and looking at those statistics, I think our team's doing a really good job in conjunction with our partners. And we'll continue to work with that. It's not something that, it's changing the massive spotlight for me as I've come into the area. And again, we'll continue to work with our partners and look at areas that we can improve on. But there's, there's no significant concern for me looking at the trends or the information, the report. We'll always have accidents and we'll always try and, we'll always respond to those, but it's about prevention. And the, the more we can get into our communities and deliver that safety message, the safer everybody will be. And that's what we'll continue to do as an area.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your question. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, convener. It's similar to Bailey Wright's question and it's on priority five, reducing deliberate fires. And it's just in the report, I mean, it's great that you've brought the statistics down so it's all going in the right direction. But it just says here, the vehicle fires account for 66% of the incidents. So I just, I don't know whether, I'm not normally on this committee, so I don't know if that's a much higher percentage than normal or whether it's standard. So it was really just to get a sense about whether this is something that's on the increase or the decrease.
I mean, that can vary, that can vary from area to area from month to month to quarter as well. So it's something that our statistics team will keep an eye on and identify any trends. It's not, again, it's not something that would concern me. Car fires can happen for various reasons, some deliberate, some can be mechanical, electrical, for example. So we, we'll work with our statistics team to identify any trends within our area and make sure we put the appropriate resources to and to identify how we can also improve those stats and in order to improve our safety, our communities. But again, it could be, it could be different next week. There's no significant trends for me that we should be concerned around.
Okay, thank you. That, that's reassuring and you'll be on it if there is. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Can I maybe ask the question myself? It's in relation to the, the house fire in curtain that you mentioned earlier. And, you know, and I spoke to one of your firemen who was with the engine that arrived there first. And it was a particularly severe fire. But we just obviously, you know, given that we have a housing crisis in Dundee, it's three houses that are out of commission. And I'm just wondering whether there is anything that would have been done differently that would have probably saved the building a bit more? Or perhaps even is there any recommendation that we should be considering as a landlord? Or other landlords in the city should be considering that may well, you know, also save the building. I know that, I think sort of saving lives is the most important thing. Buildings can be put back into place and, you know, I'm just kind of guesswork on the buildings kind of unrepairable, but you know, constructions know my forties, so.
No, I, I think that's, that's a really important question and you can, you almost give one part of my answer to that. I think if we look at that, that incident or other incidents that are very similar. If you've got a fire that perhaps starts outside in an outbuilding and progresses to the eaves, once it's into the roof structure of a, of a property. That ideally we would always tackle that from internal because we can manage that safely. We've not got the roof covering, the tiles or slates, for example, that we can penetrate with the water. But sometimes our incident commanders are trained, highly trained to assess that, that, that risk. And sometimes it becomes too risky to be inside there and we need to revert and change our tactics to external firefighting. And both those methods, if we've got it in the top floors, fourth floor assets, for example. One of the biggest challenges for us is one, safety and two is the prevention of water, the amount of water we use to extend, we start fire. And the effect that has coming down through not just the affected building, but the properties adjoining as well. When we develop a tactical plan around, as the commanders are highly trained to look at, one will always save life, that will always be a top priority, protect and save life. But right behind that is protecting property and the environment. And we'll do everything we can to ensure that we not only protect the, the property involved, but adjacent properties and the belongings within that as well. So please take a bit of assurance that that is high up in our priorities. We had a really, we had a really good response to that. We had two appliances there within five and seven minutes, which is a really weighted and a proportionate response to that type of fire. And I, I think our crews done a really good job, one, protecting themselves in the community and two, extinguishing that fire as quick as we can. We prevent it, prevent the fire spread, but it was more water damage and smoke damage to the adjacent properties. And so these things will happen, but we will absolutely maintain a focus on trying to protect the dwellings as well as much as we can.
Is there any sort of recommendation to, to landlords or is it, is the sort of, I don't know, sprinkler system just any of these things that are just too costly and it would, it's not likely to happen?
I mean, smoke, smoke detection absolutely would be, because that's going to ultimately give early warning of any fire and allow the, the occupiers to make their, their way out the building safely. And but just probably education and we can provide, we can provide advice through our website, through our free phone number to any occupier of any house. So that, that education's key and if we can support that by using the free phone number for a home fire safety visit and by using the text number, we will absolutely support anybody in our community. And particularly the ones that are most risk, at highest risk. If we can, we work with partners to identify these people, but education's key. And having that, having that evacuation plan and thinking about a safe bedtime routine, for example, is key to doing that prior to the event happening. So education's key for me.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I appreciate the honest answer. There is, seems to be no other questions. This report agreed? Okay then, let's move on, Willie. Okay, thanks very much. Take you on to item four, Dundee policing area quarterly police report. So being introduced by Chief Superintendent Nicola Russell.
Thanks, convener, and good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you all again. Delighted to introduce the Q1.
You went missing or?
Sorry, I've got some technical issues. Have you got me back?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Are you, I'm hopeful you've got me now, convener. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Great, thanks. And so, yeah, without further ado, the Q1 report then I pass apologies from Chief Inspector Eschevaria. Supported today by Inspector Graham Templar and Superintendent Adam Smith. And Graham will take local questions in relation to this report. And however, all I'm going to do is draw out some highlights for you. And as you'll see on the report, on page 34 of your report and the performance on a page. And a very positive picture for improvements across the city. There's been a reduction in overall group four crimes. There's been a reduction in antisocial behaviour incidents. There's been a reduction in robbery and serious assault, both of which have an increase in detection rates, which is extremely positive. There's a reduction in overall group two crimes, specifically around the reduction in rape. And there is an overarching reduction across all acquisitive crime across the city. And specifically house breakings with a positive increase in detection rate. Other than highlighting a couple of points out of the report, convener, I'll move very quickly to questions. But one of the, a couple of the things I'd just like to raise is the significant volume of work that's been undertaken by the community teams across Dundee, which is evidenced throughout this report in terms of proactiveness. And as well as continued work from the Police Scotland Youth Volunteers and ongoing engagement, diversion and prevention work. And which again is detailed throughout this report. And I'd just like to highlight the significant benefit that the street soccer programme has resulted in. That's been active across and throughout the summer in the city centre, which is without a doubt had a result in the reduction in antisocial behaviour incidents within the city. So as I said, the, the report's been circulated and I don't propose to detail it in any more specific points. But more than happy to take questions and as I said, it'll be supported locally by Graham and Adam for local context. So thanks, convener.
Okay, thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks very much and thanks Nicola for the introduction. Just like the fire report, a lot of good positives in there in terms of outcomes in relation to policing in the city. So grateful thanks to you and all your colleagues for all you do. I cannot speak more highly of the community teams covering the West End and Lochie, always extremely helpful. I've got a very specific question regarding the information on page 59 or 31 of your original page numbers. And that is the statement that reads, quote, "Public consultation has already been launched on the future of Rye Hill and Hilltown stations." Now, many months ago, my ward colleague councillor Michael Creighton and I raised concerns that again, because it's not the first time, the Rye Hill station in our ward area was under consideration of closure. I've had a few emails backwards and forwards, the most recent with local area commander Eschevaria on the 17th of May indicating that the consultation had not yet started and with assurances that there would be engagement. I've heard nothing since. So it's news to me if public consultation's been launched because, because we've not been told. So I suspect, I'm not sure that's actually accurate and I was just really wondering if you could indicate to me if, if in fact it is. Because I suspect it hasn't started yet.
Thanks so much for that councillor. You're absolutely right. In terms of the specific locations, I don't think we have launched consultation around Dry Hill. And I'll, I'll let Adam or Graham correct me. What we have done across the organisation is launch a number of elements of consultation around our overarching estate strategy. And it's well documented within the public domain around Police Scotland's vision and direction for the future. And the fact that our estate actually isn't fit for purpose. And we are looking at how we develop and support our staff in an appropriate appropriate operating model in terms of locations and what that looks like. So in terms of that specific station, no, we haven't. And my apologies for the, the miscommunication within this report. Of course, when we do go to consultation, you will get separate correspondence from me, the chief inspectors and there'll be local engagement. What I would say is we need to think really long and hard for ourselves as an organisation around where our police stations are best placed. And then where the touchpoints exist within the community to still engage with local officers. And, and that's work that's all ongoing currently under operation evolve that's being led across the whole of Police Scotland. And so you're, you're absolutely right to, to raise that councillor and thanks for doing so. And I know it's been a longstanding conversation around Rye Hill and some of the other stations within Dundee. And but we will, I will come back to you when there is any public consultation around those specific buildings. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. I have a little bit of a concern that quite honestly, the sword of Damocles has been hanging over this. And I assume that the Hilltown Police Station for many, many, many months. And so it would be good to hear more about when the consultation's starting, actually going to start with the community. I just want to make one other point just in advance of that consultation. As I indicated earlier, this is not the first time the Rye Hill station has been under threat. It was, we went through the same routine back in 2016. And the outcome of that was that the station would remain, however, Police Scotland would engage in consultation and engagement with the community and stakeholders and amongst stakeholders, I would assume the council itself with regard to possible shared use of the facility, which quite honestly, we in the community think is actually a jolly good idea. But that consultation or engagement never took place. And I just think that before we rush to the finality of a closure. Revisiting that would be extremely helpful. Because I think that, that the issue I've got, if that were to close, was that to be honest, the nearest police station's in an entirely different community than the one I represent. And it would be a very sad day if it were to go. But I just leave that point with you. I'm not looking for a further response, to be honest with Nicola. But I just really want to leave the point that I think some good engagement locally on possible shared use of this and perhaps other aspects of the police estate across, not just Dundee, but across Scotland would be worthy of consideration. Because that may be a model that prevents the closure of the facility but ensures that there is maximum use of it, albeit not completely by the police. But I'm grateful for Nicola's response and I will await further detail in, in due course. Thanks, convener.
Convener, I'm happy just if it's, if it's helpful, I'm really happy for us to have local conversations around opportunities that exist across the communities without any kind of foregone conclusion about what our estates might look like. So really happy to take that off table councillor and I'll ask Graham to reach out to you and others and we can have those conversations if that's okay. Thanks, convener.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay, councillor Anderson.
Thank you, convener. It was just to say, I'm a coal side councillor. And it was just really to welcome the leadership being shown by Colin Eschevaria in taking up the role as being the, the chair of the Coal Side Local Community Planning Partnership. So just to see the community really appreciated it and he got a very warm response at the first meeting and I'll email you separately about the Hilltown Police Station. Thanks.
Okay, Bailey Wright.
Thank you. Well, I'm looking at the drugs and alcohol relating to antisocial behaviour. And there's, I think there's a, outside in the community, there's a feeling that people are stopped reporting it because they don't see anything happening. They never see a policeman to speak to and sometimes they don't even get a phone call. So I know it's something that takes a lot of work at. And I do know that there's other agencies involved and we have to be proactive as well and, and everybody work together. It's just, I think all the partners have to do something. So I would like to see some sort of round table discussion. partners have to do something. So I would like to see some sort of roundtable discussion about how we can further try and solve some of the problems. I'm particularly thinking about the Hilltown. The Hilltown area is just almost a no-go area at night. And I know the new chair has arrived. I didn't get to that meeting, but hope to be at the next one. But it's really something that everybody in the community is actually talking about in that area. People are really frightened to go out after a certain time at night. So I don't, I don't agree that the antisocial behaviour stuff has come down. I think it's just people just starting to report on it.
Thanks so much for that, Bailey Wright. And actually, there's a couple of points here for me. It's totally unacceptable for anybody in our community to feel unsafe and not willing to go out at a certain time of day or night. So we will work really hard with partners to ensure that that's not the case. And you've touched on a really important point. We're intelligence-led. We need the community to tell us what's happening. We need the community to contact police either via 101, if it's non-emergency, or 999 if it is. Contact local officers through the mailboxes that we have, or indeed go through Crime Stoppers. And by providing us that information, then we understand what that looks like, and we can respond accordingly. And I have no doubt, as highlighted, that Chief Inspector Eschevaria now taking on that role, we will absolutely make some positive impact in that space. And I'll have a separate conversation with Colin and Graham off table around some of the work that we might want to do there. But Graham, I wonder whether you might want to come in and talk about some of the local work, for instance, that Operation Argonite undertake, and some of the work that we've done recently around proactivity, just to highlight some of the benefits of that to the councillors.
Absolutely. Thanks, Chief Super. And thank you, convener, for this opportunity. So there has been obviously a fair bit of proactivity. I'm disappointed that's perhaps not been publicised quite as widely as we would like. And I absolutely take on board the concerns that we can still do more. I'm sure we absolutely will. Fortunately, we've, there's been at least two prior, what we would consider weeks of action, intensification weeks focused, once, one predominantly on sort of apprehension warrants and those outstanding for crimes of violence and drugs, which form part of our local policing priorities. But also on around some of our domestic violence and violence against women and girls, which obviously features under that banner in terms of that violence aspect, because we're well aware that violence and drugs are obviously interlinked in many cases. In respect of concerns, particularly about the Hilltown, there's also been a relatively well-publicised intensification day there. The Chief Super and others were captured there as well in terms of spotted by members of the media, you know, in attendance there. There's been a number of search warrants executed in that area, given the intelligence that has already come in from the community. And I'm aware that after Chief Inspector Eschevaria's attendance at Coldside Committee, there was some information shared that was promptly actioned, much to the positive responses from, from some of the members there. So there is undoubtedly activity going on. Argonite are our sort of initiative team, if you like, to give you an explanation of them. They're a proactive team based within Dundee, formed from local officers with a knowledge of, of the local environment and ongoing criminal situation, taking proactive measures against a whole gamut of criminality, but primarily focused on drugs, serious unorganised crime, and violent domestic perpetrators. They fall within their remit, and are tasked, usually by myself, on a sort of daily basis to focus on some of these priorities. And just, just yesterday, in fact, executed a drug search warrant on the basis of intelligence that we received from the community. So it does absolutely happen. I would absolutely echo the Chief Super's position there in encouraging the members of the community to continue reporting. And I recognise that for some, it may feel, may feel in many cases pointless, because they're not seeing that instant results, or indeed not being updated as to what that leads to. But please be assured that there is absolutely ongoing activity. And again, be happy to speak to any councillor or indeed members of the public about it, and share what we can about some of the ongoing activity. Obviously appreciate the sensitivities around that area business, but it's absolutely remains one of our key priorities.
Thank you for that. But I do believe we have other partners that could be doing more. I don't see the point of allocating a house to a known antisocial tenant above sheltered housing, which creates lifetime life choices, which is not very good if it's an older person that's been disturbed. Thank you.
You know, be asked, because it'd be something that I would like to see about, something proactive from police on. In the, in the centre of the town, a number of people report to me that, you know, they seen theft in one of the shops, someone going in, you know, beans, I think it was, and helping themselves into a carrier bag with a load of sandwiches and whatever that was in the fridges. And then going out, you know, kind of unchallenged along the street and end up fighting with their mates while trying to sell the stuff on the streets. You know, we've got quite an extensive amount of CCTV and wondering, you know, the police not picking that up. In one incidence, you know, the person thought the people that were doing the stealing and the selling and the fighting with each other were on drugs of some description. I've raised it with the Hall and Drugs Partnership because I think it's an area that we kind of let be unseen or not actioned in some way. Because if they're taking some kind of drugs now, that might lead to the future drug deaths that we're trying to prevent. And of course, the alarm that the kickoff causes in the centre for people think, well, why am we going into town? You know, why, what's Dundee got to offer anymore? And if we're trying to attract visitors, you know, we've not got the best, it's not looking at its best when we've got that level of kickoff. Lots of CCTV and the police never appear. And then, then of course, it was a cleansing worker that stopped the fight. You know, buses, cars, I stopped on the high street. So, you know, what, what do we pick up? I mean, I've seen times where there's been motorcycles in the city square, these electric things, scramblers that probably do 30-odd mile an hour. So, you know, I'm just wondering, what do we pick up for the CCTV? And how do the police get employed to resolve their problems?
Yeah, no, thanks for that. And those points, convener. Can I just check, you can still hear me okay?
Sure, yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Not perfect, thank you. And there's a couple of things there then. So, you know, the, the elements around shoplifting and the challenge for us is that we will respond when we're told of shoplifting taking place. And unfortunately, there's a number of facilities and shops across Tayside and across the country that have thresholds around whether they contact the police or not, around the items that have been stolen. My position's really clear on that, and that is that we don't have a threshold for when we record crime. So, you know, if a theft's taken place and we're told about it, then we'll record a crime. And we will consider whether the solvability factors, or whether we have an instant response. And those things are separate. But at least we would understand the picture. So a bit back, you know, back to sort of Bailey Wright's point around antisocial behaviour, and whether it's dropped or not, it gives us a true record and understanding of what that crime's taking place. So if we've not been notified about it, we wouldn't necessarily know about it. Of course, the city is well covered with CCTV. And again, if things like that are picked up through CCTV, then it'll come in and we'll be dispatched and deploy accordingly. I'll let Graham come in with some of the work that we're doing locally in the city centre. But obviously, we're moving into a period, you know, and towards Christmas, where we will have a number of different high-visibility patrols that happen in the city centre. And you've touched on the sort of e-bikes or kind of motorised bikes. We also have Operation Challenge, which we are refreshing our plans for, which again, will cover the whole of Dundee, because these are not isolated to one area. So we'll pick up some of the actions that are required in terms of preventing and detecting those sorts of offences. But Graham, I'll just allow you to come in around any more sort of local context in terms of the deployment of officers from CCTV and some of our high-vis patrols in the city centre, please.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. So in terms of the CCTV response, obviously, Dundee City Council obviously covered by significant areas of CCTV, which we have a direct link, a direct line of contact with. And I would be very surprised to think that we weren't being notified if CCTV operators were spotting clear evidence of criminality. And we'd obviously be, should be disappointed to hear that if that was indeed the case. I think we have a very, we have a very good working relationship with our colleagues who work in the CCTV unit, and absolutely rely on them, particularly, as you can imagine, in instances where we, particularly during disorder, if there is in the, in the city centre at night as well, nighttime economy, bringing a number of people into the city centre. So we rely on our colleagues in CCTV to highlight. But as the Chief Super said there, clearly, the other part of that is the engagement from retailers to flag issues and concerns to us. We have obviously a dedicated city centre policing unit based here at Bell Street, who carry out a mixture of high-visibility patrols, but also plainclothes patrols in and around the city centre, who have a very comprehensive knowledge of local criminals and those that would frequent the city centre to cause disorder, and would take proactive and preventative measures to deter them from doing that. That's absolutely forms part of our patrol matrix on a daily basis, in addition to the work that we carry out during the sort of nighttime hours as well, particularly at weekends, when we see a lot of people travelling into the city centre. In addition to that, we've obviously engaged well with a number of retailers in the city centre around our desk project or digital evidence sharing capability, which is obviously makes it ever so much easier to share digital evidence with the police, which is particularly relevant when you think about the number of retailers with CCTV themselves, and in terms of getting that evidence through the criminal justice process to court. And obviously, it's something that we piloted, piloted first here in Dundee and being rolled out in other parts of Scotland now. So there's a significant amount of work going on within Dundee city centre to tackle both antisocial behaviour and shoplifting. And I won't dwell too much more on the e-bike issue there. Obviously, the Chief Super's mentioned Operation Challenge. I appreciate that's obviously quite topical, and has featured in, you know, a number of parts, and something that the entire UK is battling with. But I'm happy to take questions on that separately, if there are any, or engage with people at a separate time about that. But there's a significant amount of work ongoing around that space as well, because I understand the concerns that that poses, particularly when we look towards London, which often leads the way in terms of some of the criminality trends that we see. And I'm keen to avoid any of the sort of same scenes that we've seen down south as well. But again, I can take questions on that separately, should there be any.
There were no any reason why shops have got a threshold in the side not to report it? Is it just around the potential of spending a day in the court, paying for the staff that's there, and then paying to replace them while they're there?
Yeah, fundamentally, convener, comes down to the financial loss and what they deem to be financially worth it. Quite clearly, police have got no input to that at all. So it's individually based in terms of retailers and what they choose their threshold to be, I'm afraid. We do, as Graham said, engage with retailers against crime, and we're constantly engaging across Dundee and asking shops and encouraging them to report to us, so that we do have that true reflection. But unfortunately, we can't, we can't make people call us.
Everybody will pay for the overhead costs, eh? Let's put aside. Anyway, there is no further questions. This report agreed? Okay, let's move on again then, Willie. Thanks for that, by the way.
Okay, thanks very much then, convener. Item five then, Scotland Best Value Thematic Reviews, a report by Robert Emmett.
Yeah, Robert, you're looking to say anything?
Thanks, convener. This is, this report presents Audit Scotland's thematic review, and you may wish to invite colleagues to comment on it. It makes some good comments about the work the council's done and highlights some areas of improvement, which we will pick up through the Corporate Services Service Plan, so we can keep you updated on progress with those.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who want to make a comment? Or is it Audit Scotland here? Or is that what you're thinking, Robert?
Yeah, it's there. So I don't, convener, so I don't know if I want to make a comment.
Convener, if I can make a few comments to introduce the report. Thank you very much. I'll just run through it briefly, because I know you'll have read the papers. This is the year two thematic piece of work for our best value. I think you should be aware from last year that the approach to best value audit has changed for this new audit appointment. And each year, the Accounts Commission requires us to look at a particular theme across all councils, and then that's brought together to inform a national picture once all the council audits have been reported on. So last year, it was all in effective leadership and setting strategic priorities after the local government elections. This year, it's around workforce innovation and how councils make best use of the workforce. And in that, we covered six main questions, which are on page five of my report, which I believe is page 69 of your papers. And as Mr Emmett said, we've drawn out some good work that the council's doing. And there's a short action plan at the end of the report in terms of setting a strategy and effective workforce planning for the council. You've got your strategic workforce plan. You have some detailed workforce data underneath that to inform actions. But we are suggesting that there should be better alignment between service level workforce planning, to better align it to the strategy, so that the council can be sure it's achieving its strategic aims. And related to that, we're also recommending that the council develops smart targets and measures for reporting on the impact of that workforce strategy and plans, so that you know what impact that's having. And that also includes reporting to elected members. We also note that the council has a digital strategy, so you're looking to maximise the potential of digital technologies. And we've noted some examples where that's working well and delivering benefits for the council and for users of services. And we note that the oversight body, the forum, the digital leadership board has yet to be set up. So that's another action in terms of using digital technology for workforce benefits in the council. And we also look at flexible working, and the council uses hybrid working, and that provides benefits both to your workforce and to the council itself as an employer in that regard. And we also note that you use casual workers, which gives flexibility for services, but also there's a reliance in a couple of areas on casual workers and management have indicated their intention to review those areas to see how to make best use of those staff. And in terms of the information the council has on setting out the workforce it needs for the future, and looking to succession plan, given the age profile of the workforce in the council, there's some, there's some good examples drawn out in that report, in terms of encouraging young people into council employment, and looking at that as a career, and how to bolster and support people who are, for example, newly qualified social workers, to address the noted, I'm going to say dropout rate, that's probably not the right phrase, but looking to retain newly qualified and newly recruited workers. So in terms of the report, we do draw out a case study and good practices that you are employing. And across the national thematic, we'll look at whether these are practices that all councils are engaged in, or if some other councils can learn from good practice in some areas. So I wasn't proposing to say much more on the report. I'm happy to take questions. And two of the audit team are also here to support any matters of detail, if members have questions on that.
Okay. And it's Billy McPherson's looking for a question.
Thanks very much, convener. And many thanks, Rachel, for that comprehensive overview. You mentioned the hybrid working, and you mentioned advantages to both the workforce and the employer. But what you didn't mention was how the public perceive it. And I think obviously, hybrid working really took off during the pandemic. It did exist to an extent before, but it has very much taken off since the COVID pandemic period. And we've never really quite gone back the way. And, but, and I just want to raise a few issues around it, because I've got a bit of a concern reading this report. It talks about advantages, to quote it word for word, actually, the council is currently reviewing hybrid working policy, and senior management has identified a number of workforce benefits of hybrid working. But it doesn't seem to look at all at the potential for dis-benefits from working. And there's a couple of things I just want to highlight, and I would like your comments on. First of all, I get continual, and it's very regular. I get continual, and it's very regular complaints from the public that because of the fact that there are fewer people in the office, there is more difficult to contact officers. In fact, I was actually had a conversation with my group colleague councillor Duncan recently following complaints he'd had about people not being able to get through on the phone and people not being able to go into council offices anymore, which was a face-to-face discussion with council officers was a whole lot easier in the past. But the other aspect of this, and I don't want to give the impression I'm completely against hybrid working, I'm not. But I think I'm concerned as a mindset here that it's all positives and no dis-benefits. And are we looking carefully at the potential for dis-benefits? So contact for the public is definitely one. But the other one is, we have quite concerning information. And in fact, it was highlighted by one elected member, not myself, at City Governance Committee on Monday night. And that was the, quite honestly, worrying absence level within the council. And the fact it's really heading in the wrong direction. Aside from being on Dundee City Council for rather a long time, I did have a real career. And in nearly forty years of that, working mainly in the private sector, but to an extent in the early days in the public sector, I've never seen absence level like that. It's quite concerning. And it's not just the fact that staff are off, you're concerned for the wellbeing of staff that are off. And I'm just really wondering if that absence level, which has frankly got worse since hybrid working came along, if there's a connection between the two, because I'm always conscious of, if you like, staff morale, staff meeting regularly, staff feeling they are part of a team that are working together in a positive way. And I'm just really wondering if any of that has been lost. But overall, Rachel, more than anything, I'm a bit concerned that it's all looking at benefits and not looking at the potential. And I'll put it no more stronger, the potential for dis-benefits, be that in terms of, as I say, effect on morale of staff, effect on absence levels, but also the public being able to contact the correct member of staff and get a resolution of whatever their problem or issue is.
Rachel, are you able to have a go at answering that? Or we're looking for some of our officers to join in?
I will have a go. I will. Oh, I'm getting a poor network quality. Hopefully you can still hear me.
Yep, fine.
I will, I will ask officers to come in on the review of the hybrid working policy. Because my understanding is that review of the policy is to ensure that it meets both, you know, employee wellbeing needs and the needs of the business. And hybrid and other flexible working is a balance. So it's a balance between what the business needs and what the benefits are to the employee. And I should point out that the service that the public gets. Hybrid working offers flexibility, but it requires, and I'm saying this in general terms, it requires communication and trust. And you mentioned a sense of team, all these things. Organizations, I don't just mean yours, but you know, public sector bodies, private sector bodies, they're all finding a new way of working since the pandemic. That's, as you pointed out, that's when hybrid working really took off as a common practice. And some people really appreciate the benefits, the flexibility it gets, the time that's not spent on travelling and so on. But there, you know, every organization needs to find its balance about what, what it needs to provide the service that it exists to provide. And deciding the level of, in council's case, the level of contact with the public and what's the most appropriate balance there. And also balancing up the attraction that hybrid offering, hybrid working, according to role. Because not everyone can have it. Offering that as an employer does attract staff and it is being found to retain staff. I'm not going to quote research at this point, but we can provide that if necessary. So it's looking at how, how do you as an organization find that balance with your staff and with the public? Because hybrid working shouldn't, shouldn't cut down on the communication. There will always be people that want face-to-face contact and my understanding is the council offers that. But there should also be, we have the technology to offer contact with the public through other means, whether it's chat online or whether it's telephone services. So for us, we're looking at the flexibility it offers in terms of workforce and how that appeals to people. But also recognizing the council's reviewing that, that policy. And your council is not alone in that. Other organizations are also looking at what works for them, what works for staff. And that might change over time. It's still relatively new, I think, as a general concept. So I wasn't planning to touch on the absence point. We are seeing an increase generally in absence levels post pandemic. There's, there's an increase in mental health issues and so on. I have not looked at your absence statistics or the reasons behind them. That's not something we've looked at as part of this audit. If that's a concern for the council, then there's, there's ways to, to look at that. The comment on the engagement you have with staff, with unions, with other consultative forums. If that's a matter of concern for the council, I would encourage you to use those, those means and those routes to explore. If there's, if there's matters for you to, to comment on. I was going to pause there and let officers come in because obviously the Dundee specific points, they may wish to comment on that.
Mr Colgan.
Thanks, convenor. Just in response to Bailey McPherson's points. We've currently reviewed the hybrid working policy, where now there are three work styles with staff required to be in the office a minimum of two days per week. So that's currently been implemented. I think it's important for me to stress that hybrid working is used by a minority of staff. The bulk of council staff who work within education, social care services, waste services, grims maintenance are all at their work. So it's a relatively small number of staff that are provided with the hybrid working option. And from my perspective, hybrid offers us a greater attraction to roles when we're looking to retain people within the organization, but also when we're looking to recruit. Particularly at that senior level, where it's something that's offered by a large number of other organizations, both within the public and private sector. Just again, convenor, to give committee a sense of the, the level and seriousness. And the council leadership team review absence on a monthly basis with appropriate action and support being provided. And making sure that absence is linked to quality conversations and supporting people before they go off. But just to provide an assurance that we did a piece of work in relation to absence and hybrid working. And there was no correlation between high absence levels in services where hybrid working was being offered. It was the opposite. So we have interrogated our data and those people that are working of that option of hybrid. That is not where our high level of absence is in. So we continue to monitor that on a monthly basis. And the leadership team are actively looking at ways to continue to support our staff, the most valuable asset our workforce has. And indeed to make sure the support is appropriate to trying to prevent absence. But when people do require to go off, we continue to engage and support them and facilitate a return to work as quickly as possible. So hopefully that's helpful, convenor.
Any further clarification, Billy McPherson?
Yeah, thanks for that. And grateful to both Rachel and Greg for their, their feedback. Rachel's right, it's about balance and it's whether or not we've got that balance correct. And for me, what matters is if my constituents feel that they can easily contact and get the engagement with officers that they've had previously. And I think there's a bit of work to do on that. Specifically, however, with regard to Greg's feedback, I think it would be helpful to see the information in relation to the, what he contends is the lack of, if you like, a link between hybrid and the absence level. I think we would all accept, well, we know for a fact, because we saw it at City Governance Committee on Monday, the absence level is higher than I think we would like to see. But so if there's been a bit of work on that, I think it would be useful to share that with elected members. But I still reiterate the point that there is an issue, whether the council accepts it or not, there is an issue about engagement with the public, the perception on the part of the public, that I've used the term Dundee House feeling like the Mari Celeste before. But the point about the engagement both by phone and face-to-face with the public, albeit I fully accept that may not be entirely linked to the hybrid policy. But I'd be grateful if there has been a bit of work on the link on absence and hybrid, it would be useful to share that. Thank you, convenor. And again, thanks to both Rachel and Greg for their feedback.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, convenor. Just a quick question. I think it's for Mr Colgan. It basically says that we have to establish the digital leadership board by September twenty twenty four. I just wondered if you're going to manage to do it before the end of the month.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks, Councillor Anderson. I'll maybe pass over to Mr Emmett just to update scrutiny committee on progress in relation to that action.
Thank you, convenor. The report sets out how the board was established. And the first meeting was held on the twentieth of August, convenor. So work is already in progress.
My apologies. I just read the recommendation. I'm not reading it carefully enough. You caught me there. Thanks.
Okay, Billy Wright?
Yeah, I take no pleasure in actually saying this. But I think we've, we've got a shortage of staff all over the council departments. It's everywhere. And my concerns as an elected member is how we're treating our staff. I'm usually in a lot of different departments, different areas, and most of them are doing two jobs, three jobs, and some of them even four people's jobs. Obviously, they get tired, they get grumpy, they're, they're not happy, they either leave to go someplace else or they go off sick. And then, of course, somebody else has to pick up that workload. And so my concerns is shortage of staff and the fact that we're not treating our staff as we should.
Any officers want to make comment?
Thanks, convenor. I'm happy to, to make comment. And thanks, Bailey Wright. If there are particular examples where you feel staff are not being treated correctly, then I would encourage you to either raise those with myself or raise those with the relevant service. The safe and wellbeing of the people and staff at Dundee City Council is one of the top priorities. Members will be aware of the significant financial constraints that we're operating currently within a year overspend that we're trying to manage down, along with challenging budgets in previous years. So we try to strike that balance in service delivery and having a budget that balances. But if there are particular areas that are causing elected members' concerns, I would ask that they are raised with staff or staff members themselves raised with managers or indeed via their trade union reps. And any examples will be investigated and taken very seriously, convenor. Thank you.
Well, happy to hear you say that.
Can I, can I maybe ask in relation to the sort of leader, the, the digital leadership board and how they intend to gather up data of good practice through the rest of Scotland? And, you know, is there any sort of things at the moment that will be fed into that fairly quickly that we'll see coming into action to potentially alleviate maybe some of the staffing issues or, you know, or make them more efficient with the staff levels that we've got?
convenor, if you, convenor, if you have to come in, there's a couple of areas that we've done in the first place. One is making the best use of the digital tools we've got. So we've been working with other councils drawing on the experience of some of our new employees who've got experience working in different councils and working with the digital office to see what best practice across Scotland looks like. And there are opportunities to be smarter with what we do and to make better use of our time. Usually it takes a bit of time to deliver and it means we have to change the ways that we work, but that's our, that's our starting focus. But obviously as a council, we've got a huge number of different systems and complex systems. And one of the things we want to do is to have a more strategic look at where we invest for the future.
Can I maybe ask in areas where we've had an issue in recruiting staff? Is the weather we've tried to de-skill or downgrade that job in some way? So as we're now looking for the, the expert in housing, you know, parks and, and communities all in a one-er type of thing, you know, but we're, we're spreading the load. We're looking for the expertise in one particular area, perhaps looking to pay a bit less because we're not getting that individual that's got the multi-skill. So, so as we're recruiting.
So convenor, we're looking at that probably in two ways and we have to be mindful of the job evaluation scheme and maintaining the integrity of that. But we will sometimes look at whether we can make the job more attractive. And that might be by changing the skill mix, by making it, having more responsibility. So it's, it's, it's a more attractive job or to make sure that it's a, it's a more straightforward job that people can have the skills to apply from. So that might be not combining two disciplines and having it, looking for one disciplined person. That obviously then requires us to look at, well, what's the, what's the grade, the appropriate grade for the job? So all of that happens. And we've certainly got examples where we've recruited people and come up with different solutions. And sometimes because of hybrid working, where we've got people who've joined us because of hybrid working, whereas if we'd looked for them full-time, I think we might have struggled to get somebody. And we've got some very good members of staff at the moment working on that basis. Or for example, the joint arrangement we've got with Angus around downtown and all that, which is about just a different way of looking at things when we had difficulty recruiting to oppose, convenor.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I see no further questions. This report agreed. Okay, let's move on then, Lee.
Okay, thanks very much, convenor. Tish on to item six, council, all counts and audit. And the first report there before is external auditors report, which is for noting, and Rachel Brown and Richard Smith are here from Audit Scotland to speak to the item.
Yeah, Rachel, you're looking to go again and introduce this report.
Thanks very much, convenor. I'll be brief. We've got two documents in front of you. The first is a covering letter that summarizes the status of the audits of the council and of the charitable trusts administered by the council, which confirms basically our work is concluded bar your approval of the accounts and subsequent signing of those accounts. And we are required to report to you as those charged with governance certain formal matters before you give your approval for signing the accounts. So just to confirm firstly that I propose to issue unqualified audit opinions across all of those audits. And so that's a really good result. And I know it's the result you would hope for and expect, but it's not to be taken for granted. The financial management that sits behind an unqualified audit opinion is important. And we comment on that in the annual audit report. And the appendices to the covering letter give you the detail of the proposed audit opinion wording. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that. It also gives you the proposed wording of the representations that we are requesting from section ninety five of the sir that accompany the signed accounts. And just to say, there's nothing particularly unusual, except for the point we make in the second paragraph of the covering paper, which is the winding up of the Dundee Trust to note that the final set of accounts for that trust are the ones that are about to be signed. And they cover slightly more than one financial year. They cover an extra month up to the date that that trust was removed from the list of registered Scottish charities. And so that just looks slightly different. And this will be the final set of accounts for that trust. And the substantive results of our work are included in the separate annual audit report, which covers both our audit of the annual accounts and the wider scope work. And we also summarize any issues for your attention. Any errors we find over a reportable threshold that are not adjusted, we draw them to your attention. In case you choose to direct officers to adjust them. But just to make clear, there is one unadjusted misstatement of two point eight million pounds. And that is so far below materiality management proposed not to adjust for it. And I am quite content for that not to be adjusted. So in terms of what we have found in the audit, that's the only thing that's not been changed between the unaudited accounts and the audited accounts that you have before you. And I will pause at paragraph seven of the covering letter, just in case there are any matters, any incidents of fraud, actual or suspected, or non-compliance with laws and regulations, or other relevant matters that have occurred since I brought the annual audit plan to you that you've not already brought to my attention. since I brought the annual audit plan to you that you've not already brought to my attention. There's nothing being raised by officers in our discussions up to and including the clearance meeting. But I just need to check before the accounts are approved that there's nothing else that members would wish to raise. So I'll pause very briefly, just in case.
Doesn't appear to be. And I noticed that Billy McPherson's looking to make a comment, but I don't think it's at that stage. He's looking to make it.
That's grand then. I will move on to just touch on key messages for the annual audit report, if that's okay. Firstly, to confirm that we have not undertaken any non-audit work for the council or the charities. And so we can confirm we are independent of the bodies. And we've not changed the agreed audit fee. There's not been any additional audit work carried out there. So that's a paragraph seven of the annual audit report. And the substantive part of the annual audit report is on the audit of 2324 annual accounts. And we set out that we're certifying these accounts by the end of September, which is back in line with the usual timescale. You'll be aware that some of those timescales have slipped following Covid when we paused audit work. And because we can't drop parts of our audit work, that has had an impact on our timescales for audit delivery. So I am very pleased with the support we've received from officers to allow us to sign this set of accounts off in September. So that's grand. And I would like to formally thank officers of the council, especially finance for their support in that matter. And you'll also see in section one of our report that we confirm how we have addressed the audit risks that we identified in our annual audit plan earlier in the year. And we are content with the results of that audit work. So there's nothing else to report in terms of the audit risk to our audit opinion. Exhibit three, which is on page 11 of my report, sets out the significant findings from the audit of the annual accounts of the council. And I will point, the first point is not a misstatement. It's a new, it's a flexibility that the council is allowed to take advantage of. So because it's a new area, we reviewed it as a significant audit matter and we've reported on it there. So just to draw that to your attention and not say this was a, it's not a misstatement we found in the accounts. Other points in that exhibit relate to misstatements. The total 13.1 million and the majority of those barring 2.8 million pound misstatement have been adjusted in the accounts that are presented for approval today. And I wasn't proposing to go into the detail of that exhibit, but I'm happy to take questions afterwards. And I'll also point out that we concluded good practice was made on prior year recommendations. You'll see in the action plan at the end that we give an update on that. There are some outstanding matters still, but we're pleased with progress that has been made. And following that, there's also a section on the audit of the charitable trusts. And again, there is nothing to report in that, other than the winding up of Dundee Trust. And we've undertaken work to address the one audit risk that was identified in the annual audit plan. And we were content that there was no evidence of management override of controls. So there's no impact on the audit opinion. That's been a straightforward process, the audit of the charities this year. So that's another positive conclusion there. We then talk about the wider scope of public sector audits. We cover financial management, financial sustainability. And we note that the financial position of the council at the end of the 2324 financial year, noting that if you exclude the impact of the service concession flexibility that was brought in this year, there was an overspend of 18 million pounds for the year, which obviously creates some pressures for the council. And the impact of the flexibility was much higher than that. And we note that the council has a prudent plan for using the benefit of that flexibility. And we also report on slippage against the capital plan. There's been slippage for a few years to just, we make a recommendation that the council revisit their plans for progress, to have realistic progress on capital program and investment in housing in particular, to see if there's a way to progress that particular priority for the council. In terms of financial management, we touch on your internal controls and internal audit. And we have another recommendation underlining the the time scale for clearing internal audit reports. That's obviously something internal audit themselves have raised. But we note the, touched on in the workforce report that you have an arrangement to share chief internal auditor because it's a hard to recruit to do post and not just for your council. So that arrangement's working well and the council's considering making that longer term. And in terms of financial sustainability, we look at the cumulative funding gap that you have of 24 million pounds for the next three years. And also note that the council still needs to produce a long-term financial strategy to project costs and scenario plan for the longer term beyond medium term there. And we also note that you are commissioning a review of leisure and culture Dundee to ensure that you can maintain sustainable services. There's a section on best value and that just summarizes the key findings from the year's thematic work. And we try not to duplicate too much across those reports. And that was earlier on your agenda. So I wasn't proposing to say much on that. In terms of other wider scope areas, which cover vision, leadership and governance and your use of resources to improve outcomes. We note that you have an established performance framework and that performance against your council plan priorities is positive. You know, the majority there are within of performance indicators are within 5% of target, which is a good place to be. And we also look at the most recently available local government benchmarking framework indicators. I know a slight decrease on the prior year, but the performance compared with other councils remains pretty similar. And I wasn't proposing to go into the detail of performance reporting there. But we do confirm in terms of reviewing your governance arrangements, much as we review your financial management arrangements, to conclude that there were appropriate arrangements in place during the year. And that the council operates in an open and transparent manner. We also note that there's an independent investigation going to be carried out into the closure of the Olympia Service Centre, rather. And also noting, we take account of other scrutiny activity that involves the council. And we note the results of the joint inspection of adult support protection in Dundee, which while it identified areas for improvement, noted clear strengths and experiences and outcomes for adults, risk of harm, which outweighed the areas for improvement. So we're just drawing attention to that point in the report. The report is a dual audience, so it's a public report, it's a report to yourselves and to the Controller of Audit and the Accounts Commission. So there's an element of reporting in public on matters that you will already be familiar with. So there's an action plan at the end of the report that also covers prior year actions and the best value recommendations as well. So that's a bit of a whistle stop tour through the annual audit report that covers the totality of our audit work barring grant claims, which will be concluded shortly. So if there's anything people would like to ask, I'm happy to take questions. Just say it's a requirement that you consider the findings of our audit before you approve the accounts, which is why that's been brought to you today. So thanks very much for your patience there.
Okay, is there any questions for Rachel? Or I notice you've got in with a comment for her, is it for Rachel or for the wider number of reports?
It's for the wider number of reports, convenor, although I'll touch on what, you know, Rachel's comprehensive overview, which was very useful. The, I've not got a question specifically because we did have in relation to the accounts a very useful briefing session and I thank officers for that. I had a specific question there about the transformation fund. And Paul Thompson has kindly circulated a pretty comprehensive response on that, I think, to all elected members as well as myself. So thanks for that. And my substantive point, however, is, and Rachel did cover it at the start of her comments, the good result in relation to the good financial management of the council. And I think I just really wanted to make the comment that that I think we will all be aware of the very substantive amount of work that Mr Emmett and his team in corporate services put into ensuring the timiest production of what are pretty complex accounts. We know that from the number of pages before us today. And I think I personally would just like to pass on my thanks to the team for all the work that they put in. And also to Audit Scotland for the work that they put in in relation to the audit. But it's good to see, if you like, the clean bill of health, I think it was referred to earlier. And with that, that's really all I wanted to say, convenor. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much, Rachel, for your report and how comprehensive that was. I suppose I should say that both Bailey McPherson and myself were really pleased that you've raised the thing. Timmy has closed out of audits as an issue because it's something that Bailey McPherson's raised on a regular and Cathy Fesius took over as being trying to get these down in number. Probably quite a few of them have went on for far too long and either should be forgotten or closed out in some way. So thanks for the report and thanks that there's a clean audit and thanks to officers for producing that. Can I maybe ask one question in relation to the accounts? And that being in the Fleming Trust, I noticed it's not often we would see the counts and get another look through them to pick up something. But I noticed that there was property insurance. And I'm wondering what that covers in relation to Fleming Trust, given that we seem to self-insure everything else. You know, is that something that we would continue to do or is it? And why is the reason that we've got it there? Somebody else has no noticed that for a while either, I take it.
I'm happy to speak to that, convenor, if it's okay. Yes, so for the Fleming Trust, the insurance costs relate to the houses within the Fleming Trust. And there's quite a few houses there. We have been looking at the apportionment of insurance costs across the council. And so accordingly, we need to reach out to the Fleming Trust the proportion of the insurance premiums that relate to it. So that relates to.
So there would still be the first million quid picked up for council, should there be an issue in the Fleming Trust house?
Yes, in terms of the self-insurance element, that is indeed the case, similar to the council. But in terms of the premiums, that proportion does need to be apportioned.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any further comments. So is the audit and the accounts approved? Okay, that looks like yes, Willie. So we'll move on to the next item then.
Yes, certainly. Thanks, convenor. So on that basis, we've agreed to the external auditors report. There was a response to the external auditors report. That was reported by Robert Emmett. Are you equally happy with that? Or you wish Robert to speak to that?
Yeah, I thought we'd agreed the reports and the accounts there. But if anybody's otherwise minded, they all agreed. Okay, thank you then, Willie. So I think we're going to item seven.
Okay, thanks very much then, convenor. Item seven is internal audit plan updating progress report. This is for noting and Cathy will be speaking to this item.
Thank you.
Cathy.
Thank you, convenor. And the first report I've got here is the one where we've got the update on the progress with the plan and also the implementation of the agreed actions from the audits that have been completed. I've also got a small section on section five of the report on page 399 about the internal audit charter. The standards require that the charter is reviewed regularly. I like to do that every year. There haven't been any changes to the guidance on that, so I'm not making any changes to the charter at the moment. But it's just a flag that when the new public sector internal audit standards come out, I'm anticipating at the moment, we've been told they'll be out by the end of the calendar year. So there'll be some changes to make at the beginning of next year to the charter and I'll bring that forward to you at that time. So the rest of the report then, from page 400 onwards, sorry, it's 401, I think. The table starts with the appendix, which shows where I will have one report which we're bringing to this committee. But you'll be able to see from the status column within the table there that there are a number of reports that are very close to completion, that they are either in clearance or already, or they're at draft report stage with the services and a number of others that are at the review stage within the audit team and will have draft reports issued very shortly. So I've added a column to this table, which is new, you've not seen this before, in terms of the target scrutiny reporting, which is when we think that we'll be able to report each of these audits to the committee going forward in the year. That's based on a piece of work that's been done around looking at the timeframes for how long it takes to to plan and undertake the audits. And we've been working with services to get agreement to the timetables for the audit production, which should address the action that we've just been discussing in the previous report from Audit Scotland. So I'm hopeful that that will help. I would have to be honest and say that I can't guarantee that every single one of these reports will come to the committee that we've got in the table at the moment. But I'll keep that up to date and tell you about any changes to that as we go on. Because sometimes there are changes in terms of when services can accommodate an audit or other things can happen, which will influence the timing. But we'll keep that up to date and I'm very hopeful that we'll see a much better flow of audits coming to committees in this coming year going forward. In terms of the actions, we have a few more actions outstanding at the moment than we did the last time that we reported to you. But it does represent a closure of a 14 actions and the addition of 18 new actions. So there is progress there in actions being implemented, which means that identified weaknesses are being dealt with and risks being mitigated as far as possible. But I'm happy to answer any questions on this, if you have any.
Yeah, I know Billy McPherson's got a question for you, Cathy.
Thanks very much. And I'll start with a thank you, Cathy, because it was I who asked about having the target for scrutiny reporting. And I'm grateful you've added that column. That's appreciated. It's in relation to that, my fairly minor question is, there's two ICT reviews, which only have a TVC against them in terms of reporting timeframe. So there are particular reasons why they don't have a date against them. And given that, you know, obviously you've made real progress in relation to ensuring that you're fully staffed up within internal audit. Are you confident that, you know, it will be delivered in a reasonable timeframe? That's the end user computing cloud migration and the user access management ICT reviews.
Yeah, thank you for that question. In terms of the ICT, the reason that these don't have dates against them is because these are being undertaken by the contractor and the planning meeting to agree what we're going to do is tomorrow. So we should have dates agreed and ideas around when these audits will take place firmed up before we report to you again the next time. So we'll bring these dates forward. And yeah, now that we're fully staffed, I don't have concerns that we will be running with the sort of amount of slippage that we've seen in the last year.
That's much appreciated, Cathy. Very reassuring. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further questions on this report. Is that agreed? Okay, Willie, we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, thanks very much, convenor. Item eight then is internal audit reports. And again, Cathy, you'll be speaking to this item.
Okay, thank you. And we've got one report that we're bringing to you today. And that is the Health and Safety Incident Reports, which has substantial assurance. We were looking at the, sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. We were looking at the work in neighbourhood services here in terms of health and safety incident reporting. And page 415 has the overall conclusion there, which was substantial assurance around having well-established framework of incident reporting processes and clear policies, procedures and guidelines which demonstrate commitment to incident management and continuous improvement. We did, however, in the audit, find a few instances where some of the procedures and processes were not being fully adhered to. And we've got a new item that we're putting into reports now. And you'll see it on the, on page 416, just after the table with the individual objectives and the audit priorities there and the number of recommendations against each of these. We're now identifying the recommendations that we make as either being design control about how the system of control is designed and or a recommendation about the operation of the controls where the controls are not operating properly. of the controls where the controls are not operating properly. This one is a bit of a strange one in that we have actually got design controls here, but they are around some of the way that the system is designed to make sure that these weaknesses that were identified in the operation of controls will be addressed by making it easier for people to comply with what's required and also doing a bit of testing to make sure that, for example, documents have been uploaded into the system where they should be. But obviously, it's a good result to have substantial assurance here and comprehensive assurance against a couple of the individual objectives that we had, so happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Billy McPherson?
Thanks, convener, substantial assurance, so very, very briefly really, Cathy, and it's about the page 417, it's about one of the following areas for improvement, and it was about the incident reports or related documentation form to being complete or entirely absent. I was just really wondering, was that minor in scope? Was there very little of it? Because I'm just, I'm very conscious of the fact it got substantial assurance. So I'm just really wondering the extent of that, is it really a worry or was it something more of a one-off, if you like?
It was, it was not a significant worry, there were a number of items missing, however, we were able to find some of them in other systems, it's just that they hadn't been carried fully through to the end place. There was also a bit of duplication in the system where there's a council-wide process for recording incidents and the service had their own version as well, and there was a bit of inconsistency between that, but that's been changed now and only the council-wide one is being used, so the incidents are being only recorded in one place and therefore that duplication and missing items won't occur again because that that isn't there anymore.
Okay, now that's absolutely fine, thanks Cathy.
Can I maybe ask about that, because obviously the suggestion in there that is things aren't particularly written as accurately as they could be, if that's the case, and wondering whether there is any review of that and sense check, given that, you know, three years down the line, that might be the document that's in court, either defending or trying to defend council. So I'm wondering how accurate they are produced? Looking, looking things like in child protection, everybody that wrote the report wrote it slightly differently, you know, and might know meant the same things to some individual. So I'm wondering if that's a reflection on how potentially inaccurate things are and whether there should be some further level of review there?
One of the recommendations that we made was about some test checking of the information and that's been agreed, but I think that's probably something that some of the officers within the service might be better placed to answer.
Yeah. Any officer able to give me an answer on that as to whether they would consider it worthwhile sense checking these at some time, given that they might end up as a council's defence and litigation or compensation? Greg?
Thanks, convener. If you can leave that with us, we'll have a look at that. I certainly know from a social work services, there'll be reviews of the chronologies that are within the system and they've been highlighted as areas where there's been a focus on from previous care inspectorate reports. So let me speak to the relevant staff and we'll come back to scrutiny members with an update.
I just wonder whether, you know, given that we've had that in protection areas, that the same thing could exist in how it's written in a health and safety report as well. So thanks for agreeing to look into that, we'll hear back from you. There's no other questions on this report, so is this report agreed? Okay, Wally, we'll move on again.
Okay, thanks very much. Item nine then is Other Reports Relevancy, the remit of the scrutiny committee, and again Cathy, we'll speak to this item.
Thank you, very, very short introduction to this. This is the information around assurance, information that's being given to some of our partner organisations in either their board meetings or their equivalent of their audit committee, and it's again just for information for your awareness of their assurance levels and also an opportunity, if there's anything you want to find out some more about and to identify that at this stage.
Yeah, I think Bailey McPherson's got a question on this one as well.
Very briefly, very briefly, I'd asked informally, and I said I would raise it today. I have to say, I think this is useful because particularly for those of us that are not on particular boards, it's a, it's a very useful way of sort of getting a bit of an update. I have said to officers before, I think it would be useful if there was an elected members briefing on progress with the T cities deal, the T cities deal joint committee, papers are mentioned there, but I think a bit of an overview on progress would be helpful and I'm just really wondering if officers could make arrangements to provide that in due course.
Mr Colwin?
Thanks, convener, and thanks Bailey McPherson, and apologies, you have raised this with me and I will ensure that Robin Presswood and Mo Saunders set up time for an all elected member briefing to update on progress and future plans within the city deal, so leave that one with me.
That's appreciated, thanks indeed.
Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Thanks, convener. I was just trying to understand what happens as a result of these reports, Cathy. On page 423, the one to do with T side contracts, you've got that physical security requires improvement, system has weakness, it could prevent it achieving its control objectives. So now that you've submitted that recommendations, what happens after that and how do you check that some remedial action has been taken?
So these reports are produced by the internal auditors of T side contracts, who are not the, who we are not the internal auditor of T side contracts, so these are not actually my reports, but it'll work the same way as it does within the council, where T side contracts board, who are the equivalent of the audit committee there, will get follow-up information in due course from the auditors who will check that the agreed actions have been implemented and they will presumably have taken any other action that they feel is necessary on the back of that report having been made.
Thank, that explains it, so it's their auditor, it's not us picking it, thank you.
Councillor Anderson, just to give you a bit of background, whenever I used to receive a report like this, it's only from Cathy taking over as internal auditor that we've started to see these coming forward. I suppose there are issues that, over the good governance of the council, that we should be made aware of and previously we wouldn't. Suppose we've got the opportunity to dig a bit deeper and Bailey McPherson's obviously suggesting the first area he would like to see would be that overview of what's going on in the T cities deal, because it's only a few councillors that are privy to that at the moment, so. But, you know, it's a, it's a good report for the point of view, there's quite a bit of information, if you want to dig a bit deeper, then, you know, officers will be no doubt able to fish that material out for you. Hopefully that helps. Cheers. Okay, Wally, there's no further questions, this report's agreed, we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you, convener. Item 10 then is National
Just died on us there.
Sorry, apologies there. Item 10 is National Fraud Initiative, it's reported by Robert Emmett.
Want to say a few words, Robert?
Thank you, convener, now I'm happy to take questions on the report, nothing to add.
Yeah, any questions on this report? Okay, is that agreed?
Convener, I have a question.
Sorry.
No, no, no big deal. It's really about the information on page 431, appendix one, and it's just what appears to me to be quite a large number of errors in relation to blue badges. And I was just really wondering, is there a review process with regard to the issue of blue badges, for example, to ensure that people still qualify or that, for example, somebody sadly passed away and therefore the blue badge should be removed? I was just really wondering, does the, is there a sort of review process in place or are we purely relying on the NFI process to pick these sort of things up?
Convener, if I may, there is, there is obviously a process, David Vernon can maybe help us with the answer, otherwise we can come back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, they are monitored, but they're basically monitored in a slightly different way, so the blue badges are actually issued for three years and it's then up to the badge holder to basically reapply for it after the three years or confirm to the blue badge team that don't require it. The corporate fraud team do work with the blue badge team and do get referrals and they've got processes and procedures in place where basically they will look at it. Basically, you know, these processes will look at potentially preventing misuse of badges or addressing any misuse, or if there's any issues in relation to a third party that maybe, you know, still requires the badge, but actually doesn't have access to it. So this is looked at by the fraud team when they're passed on and there is a, there's a bit back and forward in terms of liaison. Apart from that, then some of them will come through from the National Fraud Initiative.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's very helpful, I was just really wanting a reassurance, weren't purely relying on NFI to find out errors and clearly we're doing rather more than that, so that's reassurance, so grateful, David, for that, thank you.
Okay, no further questions then, is this report agreed? Thank you, okay, Wally.
Yeah, thanks very much. Item 11 then is Corporate Fraud Team Activity and Performance, including whistleblowing, this is for noting, and again, it's a report by Robert Emmett.
Thank you, convener, again, nothing.
Okay, any questions on this report? Fraser?
Yeah, just a very brief one, it's about the information on page 475. In terms of the outcomes in table two, one of the outcomes is ongoing, fair enough, one of the outcomes is no further action or unsubstantiated, fair enough, the other one is quote dealt with in line with current people service procedures, what do we actually mean by that? Because the majority of them are under that category.
Happy to come into on that again. Basically what I mean is it's just dealt with under health, HR, human resources procedures, basically any of the procedures and processes that we have in the council, any of the policies that would be dealt with under that, but because we're now covered under the people service, that's why we call it the people service procedure, so it's any of the policies and procedures that exist within the council that are looked at to see whether they're complying with it or not.
Okay, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Just wondering if there's any more information to be given in relation to sort of what are the whistleblowing incidents, given that, you know, in some departments there's nine, you know, that seems to be a bottle of cause concern that, you know, is that one incident? Nine people, given it's unacceptable, what's, what's the issues?
Convener, it's obviously, if I may, it's important that, given that a small numbers of allegations, that the whistleblowing remains confidential. I'm happy to look and see if what we can share with you, if we give you some indication of the types of allegations that are made, just to give you a sense of, but I think we just have to be thoughtful about small numbers may mean it's possible to identify people, so it's important that that confidentiality is maintained.
Okay, David, are you looking to make a comment there as well?
Yeah, just, just, I want to just show you paragraph 4.5.2, which basically we give a very high level summary of the type of areas that we have whistleblowing activity in and allegations of fraud, but again, because of what Robert says, we don't want to, you know, to breach any confidentiality under whistleblowing, but we do give a sort of a high level flavour of the type of areas where we have investigations carried out within the year.
Okay, I'll go back and have a look at that then, now you've said that I didn't read the papers. Okay, is this report agreed? We'll move on then, Wally.
Okay, thanks, takes on to item 12, the council plan progress report, this was remitted to this committee by the City Governance Committee.
Obviously, we've all seen it at City Governance, is there any questions? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, convener. It was, now, it's to do with, let me get my right page, it's to do with eligible ones and twos accessing early learning and childcare, and I think in the report it talks about the rollout on the guidance, but just a bit more information on how we're ensuring we're capturing eligible two-year-olds to make sure that they're being given the opportunity to become part of early learning and childcare settings and whether there are any reporting requirements on that yet, I think it'd be for Audrey.
Yeah.
Happy to come in, convener, if that's okay, just to say that, yeah, we, we could, I think, share the details of how we, we reach out to families and make sure that all eligible children are offered a place, so take that offline and share that with you, councillor Anderson, if that's okay? Thank you.
I think it should be the rest of the committee as well, Mrs May, that'd be much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, well do, convener, thanks.
Yeah, is this report agreed? Okay, Wally, let's move on.
Yeah, thanks very much. Takes on to item 13, local government benchmarking framework performance indicators, again, this report was remitted to this committee by the City Governance Committee.
And anyone got any questions on that? Oh, is this report agreed then? Item 15 then, Wally.
Yes, sorry, thanks, convener. Item 14 is Local Government Benchmarking Frameworks, supplementary report for reducing child poverty and equality indicators, this is a report by Chief Executive for noting.
Convener, could, could I just say a couple of words about the report?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so it's obviously, this report was at the request that came when we discussed the local government benchmarking at committee, so it was agreed that officers would bring forward the details of the performance indicators that weren't going in the right direction for that particular theme, which was the child poverty and inequalities theme. So the report sets out any additional information we now have, but also gives some bullet point information, so from paragraph 4.4, it takes the nine indicators, assesses them, gives you the performance, including any updated data, as some are now going in the right direction, but then lists some key actions that are being taken. What we would say is these actions are not everything that has been done, but it was to try and link the fairness plan and the child poverty indicators with some of the key work that's been done, and obviously the child poverty plan came to committee after the benchmarking report, which gave a lot more detail on that theme as well.
Okay, I noticed councillor Hunter there.
Yeah, no, thank you, convener. Officers would probably be well used to me asking a number of these kind of questions before, but I think the one that I want to kind of focus on is the school attendance rates. So I'm aware, obviously, when scrutiny went out to Baldragan, and I attended in my other role at that time, there was quite a bit of talk about school attendance, what Baldragan in particular was doing, and I know a lot of our other schools are doing something similar, so I suppose my question for officers is more about how is that progressing and what, you know, do the work that happens in a number of our schools have done pilots, have been really successful, are these rolled out to other schools and is there learning what other schools could take from some of the work that's been going on in our schools in the city?
Yeah, Mrs May?
Yeah, happy to come in on that, thank you, convener. Yeah, the answer, I suppose, the high level answer is absolutely, yeah, there's, this has been a key focus of our overaction strategy around every Dundee learning matters, the presence in our schools obviously is, is a real challenge for some families just now, and so it's been a priority for all schools in terms of their improvement work and their collaborative work across different school partnerships. So yeah, and we use our learning together days with our head teachers and other leaders to share the information and to share the good practice, so that that's, that's repeated across other schools and, and we follow that through in terms of our own central officer support for our schools and our visits and our scrutiny around what they're doing. It continues to be a challenge for lots of families, still finding it difficult to get the children and young people to school every day, but we still continue to have a huge focus on it and yeah, absolutely share across the city good practice. Thank you.
Billy McPherson?
Thanks, convener, and could I first of all thank Andrea and colleagues for their efforts in putting this together, because I think this is useful supplementary information of what was originally reported to committee, and I think the information in 4.4 gives a quite clear and quite stark indication as to the continuing challenge ahead in relation to tackling the issue of child poverty. I had a very specific question, I think I've mentioned before, I have visited the project in Llanlaston about trying to improve employability opportunities for families and was very impressed to the work that was being done there, and I note beneath that a particular bullet point, the additional work that's being done in adjacent Stobswell West. I was just really wondering I I was just really wondering if officers could give an indication as to will we get some form of feedback, a report to perhaps to City Governance Committee in due course as to the outcomes of that in terms of success? Also, where we go from here in relation to that, because it struck me and I'm conscious of the officer resource and they're not just council officers, because on the day I visited, I met various other agencies, including Social Security Scotland, D W P and so on, inland Lathon. But are are we going to get some feedback on the lessons from that? And the and and how we might be able to, leaving aside the the, you know, the considerable staffing resource involved, how we might be able to roll that out to other parts of the city where employability is indeed a a a an issue. So I'm just really wondering what the reporting back mechanism will be and when elected members will get some reassurance as to the success of the project and where we go from here in relation to.
Thanks, Convene. If you're comfortable, Billy McPherson, there is an independent evaluation being carried out on the Llanlainn Pathfinder. Once that's been complete, I'm not sure of timelines yet, because the Pathfinder will go on for another eighteen months. Then officers will consider the result of the Pathfinder evaluation, report that through the usual way. And depending on the outcome of that evaluation, make appropriate recommendations, considering all of the different aspects, such as you've noted, and staffing, partnership staffing and funding. So I'm not keen of timescales yet, but there is an independent evaluation being commissioned. And I think currently underway on the Llanlainn Pathfinder, which will be reported on.
And when you say, just to be clear, Greg, when you say to be reported on, will come to committee in due course?
My 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 thinking on that and Billy McPherson would be it would come through city governments. What I would need to check out, though, is just the timings of that, given that it's not a Dundee City Council commissioned evaluation. It's been led by Scottish Government.
Yeah, I understand that, but but it's just so that frankly, we as elected members get an update on, you know, how it's gone and 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 what we can perhaps look to achieve elsewhere going forward. You know, on the learning outcomes from that particular project. But grateful for the chief executive's reply.
And then when we ask, given, you know, obviously, there's been a focus on trying to address child poverty over a period. And it would appear that the Scottish government's statistics are slipping backwards. And and I note that ours is we're rated twenty ninth out of the thirty two forties. Where 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 have we come from? Have we got worse over a period of time? You know, is there is there is there some more that we're needing to do? Or requests for governments assistance in some way to to make a difference? I know that, you know, obviously decent employment in the city would make a big odds, but, you know, what what are we? What's the ask? How would we go about trying to resolve that? You know, it's no something that is to be overly proud of. Okay, Andrea.
Yeah, so the figures have have got slightly worse just since the pandemic. So at the moment, we're still reporting the benchmarking figures are twenty two, twenty three. So there's a bit of a lag period yet. So that has dipped up slightly since the pandemic, but we do have the trend data going all the way back to twenty fourteen, fifteen, which is in the L G B F report. What we haven't seen yet is the full impact of the child payment implementation. Because that was launched during twenty two, twenty three. So then, you know, we won't see the impact of that and probably till the next benchmarking figures come through. We would hope that would have an impact on our figures and probably across Scotland. But, yeah, it is still a significant concern that the figures aren't where we would have wanted them to be at this point, despite all the hard work that is going on across the city.
Yeah. Okay. Maybe maybe it'd be useful, or I would find it useful if you could sort of issue these trend figures over a period of years that we can, just to see where we're where we're climbing to and.
The the trend figures are actually on page five hundred and forty seven of the papers. Just go, it's it's back in the L G B F report, Convene. But if there's any further information, I'm happy to take that on board.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much for that. Councillor Anderson.
I think Andrea has answered my question. It was about the impact of the Scottish child payment. You know, Professor Danny Dorling said it's the single biggest intervention in Europe since the war to tackle child poverty. So it'd be good to get a sense of the impact that is having going forward and when we could expect to see that. It's lifted a hundred thousand children out of poverty in Scotland as an intervention. So it's good you clarified that it's not showing in these figures yet.
Okay, is this report agreed? Okay, thank you. So we want to go now, Willie.
Yeah, thanks, Convene. I'll take you on to the remaining report, item fifteen, risk management annual report, which was admitted to this committee by City Governance Committee.
Yeah, any questions on this report? Is that report agreed? That's the business then. Thank you for your time. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks, Convene.